Would the candidates for the Bear Valley Unified School District Board please take your seats at the table? Is Mr. DeBoer in the house? Good evening, candidates. Thank this for two seats on the Bear Valley Unified School District Board. Each seat is a four-year term. Let me review the timing for you for this time, so you'll be familiar with it. Again, we're adhering to the one-minute rule. When you see the green card, that lets you know that you have 30 seconds remaining. The yellow card lets you know that 10 minutes is... 10 minutes? No, no, 10 seconds are remaining. And the red card indicates one minute and you need to stop. If you are still speaking, you may your... And hopefully be all right now. Very often. Our candidates this evening will introduce currently who are seated at the table. Right in front of me is incumbent Steve Foltz of RCK Properties Incorporated and Bear Valley Unified School Board Member. And next to him is candidate Paul Zavoyta, Realtor at Miller Step and Sotheby's. Incumbent Kathy Herrick, Vice President and Sales Director at Big Bear and Bear Valley Unified School Board Vice President, could not be here this evening. She has submitted a prepared statement that I will read on her behalf. So let's begin with opening statements. Gentlemen, you have one minute. Let's start with Mr. Foltz.
Okay. Thank you. My parents moved here in 1955. I grew up here. I've spent most of my life here. I've worked here a lot and raised my family here. My educational background is I have a bachelor's degree in physics from the University of California, Santa Barbara. I have a master's degree in public policy analysis from the State University of New York. And I have a second PhD, a second masters and a PhD from the University of California, Riverside, in experimental particle physics that I actually got back in 2006. I've been on the school board for four years. I've been on a variety of other boards here in the valley for almost a total of 20 years. Probably the biggest accomplishment I think we've achieved in the last four years on the school board is we hired a new superintendent. She's created an outstanding management staff to... That's really energized the district and put us on a path of continual improvement. I think it's really important that the board continue to support her.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. Mr. Zavoyta, will we have your one-minute opening statement?
Hi, I'm Paul Zavoyta. I moved to Big Bear about 25 years ago after receiving... After going to do my postgraduate work at San Diego State University of Education and getting my teaching credential. When I moved up here, I taught for nine years in the school district, six years with Evelyn Fondo over here at North Shore Elementary, and three years with Joe Reeves in the back at Big Bear Middle School. I met my wife at the middle school and we started a family and we thought it would be a good idea. It was both important to us that my wife stay home and raise our child, so I got into the very lucrative business of real estate right before the market crash. I built my business up over the last 13 years, but I was always... Education's always been part of my life, so I also ran for school board while I was building my business. And I served eight years on the school board. The plan with my wife was that when the time was right, that she would go back to teaching. And an opportunity came up in 2016 for her to do that. Ed Koch stated that I had to step down from the board in order for that to happen. Now that two years has passed, I can run for board again and that's why I'm doing so. Last thing I'd like to mention is that I'm also a parent who has a student in our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Zavoyta. Incumbent Kathy Herrick, Vice President and Sales Director at Big Bear and Bear Valley Unified School Board Vice President. As I said, if you may present here this evening, I will now read her one-minute opening statement.
I apologize that I'm unable to attend tonight's candidates forum for the Bear Valley Unified School District Board. I appreciate the chamber for hosting this event. The last three and a half years as a school board member and current board VP has been a continuation of my commitment to our school district. Raising our daughter in Big Bear gave me the opportunity to engage in our schools where I discovered my passion for working with students and district staff. Prior to joining the board, I assisted in classrooms, participated in booster clubs, oversight and advisory committees, and volunteered campus hours to ensure not only the success of my child, but every student I had the pleasure of interacting with. As a board member, we have successfully retained the superintendent who with more direction has helped provide a cohesiveness to the school district at levels not seen before. Also, as a Big Bear business owner for 23 years, I understand the need for fiscal responsibility and community involvement. I would appreciate your vote for me, Kathy Herrick, for reelection to the school board to continue the path of providing the best quality education possible for our children and a better future for our community.
That concludes opening statements. We will start with our first previously submitted question. Mr. Foltz, we'll start with you. Making good decisions and having integrity are two important traits for any board member. Does your personal history reflect those qualities? Please give examples.
Yes, I think it does. I've been on a variety of boards, the DWP, including the city council. I've faced a variety of difficult decisions over the years, and I think we've made good ones. Sometimes it's hard when there are two competing people that both want something different and you're faced with a decision between them. I think I've been able to do that. The integrity part, I think my integrity has been without question. And it's really difficult, I think, to underestimate some of the challenges that you face when you're on a public board, especially on a big school.
Thank you. Mr. Zavoyta, would you like to answer that question?
I agree with Steve, what Gail said earlier. When you're on the board, you should have diversity pretend. And maybe sometimes my opinions tend to be more diverse. And sometimes those decisions, it's appropriate to compromise and so that the board can move forward in a certain direction. And sometimes you do have to stand by your personal morals and ethics. I know that when I was on the board, 95-plus percent of the time, there were five little votes. But there were two four-to-one votes that were taken while I was on the board. I was the one on the four-to-one votes. And it took a lot of courage for me to do that. But at the end of the day, I found that not... that my courage wasn't needed. That all my fellow board members understood why I did that. It was a great board. I felt no animosity whatsoever. We respected their... I respected their opinions. They respected my opinion. But there comes a time where you have to stand up and say, "I just can't vote for that based on my beliefs." And I don't hesitate to do that when it gets to that point.
Thank you. Mr. Zavoyta, will you have any known conflicts of interest by serving on this board? For example, do you own companies or land or represent others that may create a conflict of interest for you?
I wish I had lots of companies and land, but no, I don't. My wife, let me finish the story. As life would happen, I stepped down from the board. I had two years before Ed Koch said I could then return to the board. As life has its twists and turns, my wife's mother was diagnosed with Parkinson's and was moved into assisted living last year. And we decided that to make the decision that the right thing to do was for her to spend more time with her mother. So she no longer is working for the school district. So if people were to think that was a conflict, although legally it wasn't, it no longer exists. The second conflict of interest, which a lot of people think is the opposite of a conflict of interest, is that I have a student in the school district. I say it's the opposite because whatever decisions I make will affect my son, but they're going to affect all children. So I feel like that gives me more skin in the game, being that whatever decisions I make for all children will also affect my son.
Thank you. Mr. Foltz, would you like to answer that question?
Certainly. I am in the process of retiring, but I am still the Vice President of RCK Properties. And RCK does continue to own property in the valley. And if, in the event the school district was doing something in the proximity of that property, it would constitute a conflict of interest. And over the years, that has come up. And that's part of the integrity piece because the conflict of interest code says that you need to announce it when you have a conflict, state what that is, and then recuse yourself. And I have done that consistently on every board I've been on. If that situation arises where there is something that does create a conflict between RCK and the school district, I will recuse myself. As I said, I've done that many times in the past on all the boards that I've been on.
Thank you. Mr. Foltz, if you acquire a seat on the board, what do you consider to be the most pressing issue?
I think the most pressing issue right now is probably student engagement. I mean, one of our... Part of our mission is to provide innovative learning environments for all of our students where they can thrive academically. And our students, we've done surveys to try to find out exactly what their feelings are. And engagement is a major issue. It's... I think it's clear that students are engaged in their educational process. Learn more. I mean, there's just no question about it. And our levels of engagement need to improve significantly. And so I think probably the biggest thing would be to find ways to create those innovative learning environments to engage students.
Thank you. Mr. Zavoyta, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, I have two things. Engagement. Our student survey that we give out called the Youth Truth Survey. It's a survey that I learned about when I was visiting High Tech High Elementary, Middle, and High School down in San Diego. Showed that of all the different categories they tested, our lowest was student engagement. And right there on their website, it mentions that student engagement is the leading indicator of academic achievement and persistence in school, as well as a key element of school culture. When I was teaching back when no child left behind me and around and right before I left in 2005, we saw changes in the curriculum that started packing standards in, mostly rote standards. And it wasn't enabling us with the high stakes test at the end of the year they had to prepare for, the time to really engage students and really get them involved in what they were learning. It was teaching one standard and then having to move on to the next standard, and move on to the next standard. And what I realized in retrospect is that we were covering topics instead of teaching topics. So I think we need to go back and take another look at how we're doing education and to really focus on engaging kids again, even if that means sacrificing a few of the quote-unquote standards.
Thank you, Mr. Zavoyta. Mr. Zavoyta, what are your plans for increasing enrollment throughout the Bear Valley Unified School District?
Engagement. I think when you have engaging schools, when you go down... I was always a proactive board member. I loved going and visiting our school sites. But I also love visiting other school sites. I would look up what I thought our school should look like and what I was hearing from other parents in the community what schools should look like, and I'd go visit those schools. The school I kept coming back to was High Tech High, which are elementary, middle, and high schools down in San Diego. When you see what's happening in those schools, you would see that people would want to put their kids in schools like those. They've been very successful schools. They were founded by the owner of Qualcomm. He was really mad one day and said, "Can't we get the employees we're looking for? They're not teaching these kids the right thing." So he decided to open his own charter school down there and it's since grown into a wonderful thing. I do know that the Bear Valley Ed Trust is now reading and I think they are getting a movie of the book Most Likely to Succeed. I would suggest all of you guys to check that out. It's on my website, zavoyta.com. And they go to that school, High Tech High, as an example of what schools should look like.
Thank you. Would you like to address that question?
Of course. Enrollment is always an issue. It is always tough. And the parents are the ones making the enrollment decision. We are currently the only school up here, so the alternative is either online or homeschooling or some other vehicle. And so I agree with Paul that engagement is a critical issue and we need to find innovative programs that are appealing to parents that not only provide great education for kids, but also encourage parents to participate and bring their kids to our school. After-school activities are also a significant part of kids wanting to go to school and engaging them. And so we need to continually... Continue to look at extracurricular activities that will attract kids to our schools. But I do totally agree with Paul that engagement, as I said in my response to the previous question, is a key part.
Thank you. Mr. Foltz, several candidates have publicly stated that knowledge of the history of Big Bear is essential. We need leaders who look forward, not backward. Innovation and technology are the cornerstone of successful and cost-effective organizations. When have you personally promoted innovation and technology?
Well, we did a major technology push. The district has done a major technology push in the past. Unfortunately, it was somewhat scattered and not focused, and it wasn't sustainable. And so I pushed hard for our technology sustainability program where we set aside money, and it's not an insubstantial amount of money, every year to make sure that not only do we have our approaching one-to-one in the core classrooms, but that we've got the software, updated software, and that the equipment works on a continuous basis. And so that's one of the key things that we've done in the last few years, I think, that has improved the quality of education here.
Thank you. Mr. Zavoyta, would you like to answer that question?
Yes. When I was on the school board, like I mentioned, I picked a great time to get into real estate. I picked an even better time to get into the school board business right when we had our worst financial crisis that a school district has seen since the Great Depression. And even though we were losing money, I thought it was important, even on a small scale, to push forward. So even while we're rolling back programs, I actually threw looking around and met an individual who was a tech coordinator at a school site down the hill who had started a one-to-one student-to-device program in the classroom using iPod with elementary school teachers. I invited her up. She met with myself, the superintendent, the principal over in North Shore, and the head of our tech department. And we actually rolled out that program, got a cart of devices for first, third, first and third grade classes at our elementary schools. And that got our one-to-one device program rolling, even though it was during a time where we were cutting back. It was important for me that we keep pushing forward.
Thank you. Mr. Zavoyta, here's a two-part question. Do you think bullying is an issue in our schools? And if so, what are your suggestions to alleviate the problem?
Talking to parents, I love running for school board because it gives you more license than usual to walk up to people and say, "What do you think about our schools? What are the good things? What are the bad things?" One of the biggest things with parents is bullying that's going on. Now, a lot of people you talk to say, "Bullying. Everyone's always been bullied. Buck up, you know, it's part of growing up." Bullying is different these days with the electronic devices. When you get bullied, it's not you and a couple of friends sitting around getting bullied. It gets put online and every single student in that school and beyond gets to see what they're saying about you. Kids are no longer calling you jerks or idiots. They're telling you should kill yourself. And I'm fortunate to say that that happens in our district, and I would bet it happens in every district in the United States. It's a conundrum trying to figure out how to solve it. There have been some school districts, and a lot of research on it. There are some school districts that have come up with plans that seem to work. I haven't found anything scalable. I do give credit to our district, particularly at the middle school where my son is, for starting a program this year and really making it a focus more than it ever has been before.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Foltz, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, certainly. There's no question bullying is an issue at all of our schools. Middle and high school, it's probably worse. Cyberbullying is very difficult because it's happening outside of the schools and we still have to try to deal with it. The program that Mr. Zavoyta mentioned is Expect Respect. It's a new program at the middle school that some of our... One of our new administrators brought to us. It does appear to be working. We've been using PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention System, for several years at our elementary schools primarily. I think we're making progress, but it's a very difficult issue and it is not something that we can just ignore or that we are ignoring. So I think we're making progress there, but there are still ways to go.
Thank you. Mr. Foltz, with active shooting situations occurring in schools across the country, do you think it could be a problem here? And as a board member, what guidance can you offer?
Well, we certainly hope there will never be a problem here, but hope is never a plan. And so we started this year the Alex program. And we are training all of our sites, all of our staff in active shooter situations. And even the board took some of the training. It's difficult. It's awkward. It's uncomfortable for some people, but it's having an impact. And it's getting people to think it could happen here. And we hope that it will not happen here, but if it does, I think we're as prepared as we can be. And everyone of the staff that I've talked to, that I've heard from appreciates it, that hey, they can do something. If an active shooter happens to be on our campus, there are specific steps that they should take, and they know what those steps are. And so I'm hopeful that in the horrible event that should happen here, we will respond appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Zavoyta, would you like to answer?
Yes. I take a different approach. When I first got on the school board in 2008, we go to an annual meeting, the California School Board Association meeting. And one of the first symposiums I went to was on school shootings. And what I learned from that wasn't about how to respond to a school shooting, it's how to prevent it. And talking to, reading the research, talking to people up at the high school administrative roles, that they feel like the better the school culture, the more they're in touch with kids, the more counseling there is. It seems like we've done these school shootings, but when it's done, everyone said, "Well, we knew that kid was having problems." We need to have the resources to A, know that there's a problem with certain kids, and B, the resources to be able to fix those problems or address those problems so it never happens in the first place. When I was on the school board, I believe, oh, nine or 10, Jeremy King, we had a police officer who was a resource officer at the high school. That was wonderful. He wasn't there to show the government intimidated students, but he bonded with students. They felt comfortable going up to him and talking to him and sharing, "Hey, so-and-so is not having a good day." We'll talk about it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Zavoyta, we have... Oh, let me back up here. Are you aware of any plans for the newly acquisitioned property?
I'm not aware of any solid plans. I do not think there are solid plans yet. There's a lot of rumors going around. I was at the meeting where it was accepted and got some information there, but there wasn't a lot of explanation about what the eventual use of the property might be. So at this point in time, I'm not familiar. I know from what I've understood and from what Steve told me about what we meant, that there's some big plans as far as developing it with the community to be a sports facility and center. I'm sure Steve can tell us more.
Mr. Foltz, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, and this is one of those conflict of interest things for me because RCK Properties is the one to make the donations, and so I did try to stay out of it. No, there are no firm plans, and there shouldn't be because this is a donation to benefit the school district and to benefit the community. Do I have some ideas as to what might be work there? Yeah. And again, getting back to the engagement of students and providing opportunities for innovative learning environments, is I think part of the focus. And sports fields to meet the needs of our youth. There's a site available there for an aquatic center, if the community wants one and can afford one. Hiking trails. It's got a variety of things that are available. Nothing's in concrete, but I think it will be a wonderful asset to this community once we get into the development and do some things.
Thank you. Mr. Foltz, we have three elementary schools in Big Bear with varying enrollments. What are the projections for those three schools in the next five to 10 years?
Well, the first thing that's going to happen is removing the sixth grade to the middle school. And that's going to have a dramatic impact on all three elementary schools. And the biggest impact is going to be on Big Bear Elementary. It's a small school now, and it will be even smaller once that takes place. We're looking at a variety of options. Bear Tech is currently there, which is an innovative program for place-based learning. And it seems to be working. It's been expanded. We need to find other innovative programs to try to attract more students to Big Bear Elementary. Big Bear, North Shore is at a good size. Baldwin Lane, I think, will be, continue to be at a good size. The only campus that is really a concern is Big Bear Elementary. And we do need to find innovative programs for that school that will attract parents and students.
Thank you. Mr. Zavoyta, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, thanks, Steve. I've now had facts for facts about, you know, what the enrollment is at our school district. I do know that the school board is looking. After the sixth graders from Big Bear Elementary go over to the middle school, their enrollment's going to be quite low for a school site. You know, when you are faced with challenges like that, you look for opportunities. So I know that they're planning to have discussions about doing some creative things with that site, which might include increasing student engagement and keeping the enrollment up and maybe even attracting some of the students who are homeschooled in the community. I know that when we had a financial crisis, we had a 7-Eleven committee, which is a committee that you have to start when you go to close a school. Because of that crisis, that was one of the things we were actually considering doing. I know Phil Hamilton is here. He was on that committee, and it was a lot of hard work and time. And at the end of the day, when the information came in, we really wanted to try to keep that school open and make it work. And I look forward to doing something creative there and seeing what we can do with the second future.
Thank you. That concludes the previously submitted questions. We do have a couple of questions from our audience. This question's directed at both candidates. There has been talk of removing a parent's right to opt-out their child from sex education curriculum. Would you be for or against this action for sex education or any other class which the parents would want to opt-out their child? Mr. Foltz?
This is always difficult. I don't think I would want to interfere with a parent's right to direct their child's education. And so if they had strong feelings that they didn't want their child to participate in a particular aspect of our curriculum, then I think they should have the right to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Zavoyta?
When you become a board member, you swear an oath of all the Constitution of the United States and the state of California. Our funding depends on what the state gives us, and there are laws that we have to follow. I think the question at the time, I totally agree with Steve, that the parents should have that choice. I am not sure what the legal standing is on that and what the repercussions are to the district on that. And I don't know, not knowing that information, whether that's one of those items where one would stand up for, regardless of what the penalty might be.
Thank you. And this question is directed to both of you. Start with Mr. Zavoyta. If elected, what is your priority goal for the first year in office?
I already talked about engagement. I said there were two things. The second thing that I think is really important is dealing with the 50%. We have about 25% of our kids who graduate go onto a four-year school. 25% of our kids go onto a two-year college. 50% of our kids do not go to college. Currently, we offer AP classes, and 43% of our juniors and seniors are taking advanced placement classes. Those are usually classes for kids going to four-year schools. Yet only 30% of our kids take CTE, Career and Tech Education classes. I really think we need to expand our CTE classes, the trades, technology, do what we can so that every student, John Gaffey was a board member, he said one of the best things I ever heard board members say when they were doing their mission statement. He said, "Every kid who walks across that stage of graduation should have the skills, should have an interest and a passion, should have the basic skills to start going down the path of that passion and have a plan to pursue that passion." And I think for that 50%, we really need to try to take that idea and push it forward and spend more time on it.
Thank you, Mr. Zavoyta. Mr. Foltz?
First, right now, we have gotten the district on a path of continual improvement from top to bottom, from the elementary schools through the high school. And so my number one priority would be to continue that process. It's going to take time. It's going to take a lot of effort over the years. But you don't get real progress by shotgunning and doing something here for a little while and doing something over there for a little while. We are improving CTE. I totally agree with that. And we are expanding CTE and making more pathways so that the students come out with skills that they can use. So I agree with that. That's part of the plan. That's part of the continual improvement. So that would be my number one priority. Everything Paul said is true. We do want to make sure that our students graduate college and career-ready is the buzzword. And that is different for every child.
Thank you. That concludes the questions from our audience. Mr. Foltz, you may now present your one-minute closing statement.
Okay. The school district is functioning very well. The last three years, I think we've made tremendous strides in improving the quality of education that we're providing our students. But we're not a great district yet, but we're on the way to becoming a great district. And I would really like to be part of that. I think Kathy Herrick and I, the two incumbents, are important parts of the board and that it would be important to keep that team together. So I would encourage everyone to vote for, not only myself, but for also Kathy Herrick, who unfortunately couldn't hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. Mr. Zavoyta, your closing statement?
Yeah, let me finish off my opening statement. The last thing I mentioned is that of a parent. It really has resonated with a lot of people that they think that there should be a parent on the school board. There currently aren't any parents. None of the candidates are parents. So I think that's something that differentiates me from everybody. Another thing, though, is, as I mentioned before, I tend to be an outside-the-box thinker and innovator. But I'm also someone who challenged the, what is it, the Wataki? That's what we've always done type thing. When we were looking for a superintendent, we worked with our consultants and they brought us a whole bunch of... we worked with our consultants and they brought us a whole bunch of resumes and we had to narrow them down to five for interviews. We narrowed them down to five and there was a sixth interview, a sixth person that I really wanted to interview. And I pushed back against everyone who was saying, "You know, we have five, five's enough." And I said, "No, I really have a good feeling about this person." I wouldn't give up. They included that person. That person went on to become our superintendent. So I'm someone who's going to push against the norm when they don't make sense, not all the time, when they don't make sense. And I'm going to be someone who offers a different opinion, a different point of view on things. So I hope you vote for me, Paul Zamoita, for school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zamoita. Audience, you have just heard from the candidates for the Bear Valley Unified School District Board. There are four...